Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 6th. Appreciate everybody being here this evening. First order of business is invocation and pledge. We have Reverend Catherine Davis from Smyrna First United Methodist Church at 1315 Concord Road. I'd invite you up now to lead us in the invocation and pledge. Everybody, please rise.
If you would bow your heads with me in prayer. God, thank you for this evening. We thank you for this time that we get to come together. We pray that it would be pleasing in your sight. God, please be with Mayor Norton and all of the council members. Help them to lead and guide this city with all the great ways that they do. God, we ask that your Spirit would continue to dwell among us and that we would continue to be led and guided by you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend, for being here with us. Appreciate you. We don't have a very long agenda tonight. Agenda changes, item two, we don't have any. Item three is the mayoral report. I don't have a report, but I am gonna, didn't plan on doing this until pre-council, but I will do it. There's been a lot of information out there on social media and just everywhere else about what exactly we're doing with the downtown and what we've approved and what we haven't and where we at on different things. At our last meeting, we did approve the concept design for the redo of the fountain area and roundabout, which would be replaced by a green space, and the parking deck. So that has been approved five to zero, and now we will begin working on the details like what the light poles are gonna look like, where the benches are gonna go, landscaping, all of those kind of things. The other part of it is on the green space in between the Community Center Atlanta Road. And I want everybody to be clear, we have a non-binding letter of intent with Stillfire Brewery that this council, that this elected body agreed to unanimously to move forward, because there wasn't any reason to move forward with discussions with the brewery unless we had consensus of council that this is something that they wanted to talk about, to go forward with. So the next step will be talked about at the committee of the whole meeting next Thursday, and every step along the way will be in a public meeting. So this is not gonna be anything that's not transparent. Everybody's gonna know what's going on, and it's my hope that this body will approve the brewery and the park. But nothing is in stone. I just wanted everybody to be clear about where we are in the process. We've not sold any land. We've not done any deals. We don't have a contract yet. I hope that we do soon, but we don't right now. So if that clears anything up, any misinformation that's been put out there, I hope that's been helpful. With that, I'll conclude. Four is land issues, zonings, annexations. We have one for A, and this is really just correcting a wrong that council decided to handle variances here in council chambers rather than the License and Variance Board. This is ordinance 2021-13, "Public Hearing: Approval of Code Amendments to the City Code of Ordinances to Move Variance Requests From the Mayor and Council to the License and Variance Board Beginning July 14, 2021." And I'd invite Joey up for any background, please.
Good evening. Joey Sobbs, Plainer Two. What this does is, the ordinance was changed two months ago for variances to come to mayor and council. What this does is revert back to the state it was before they came to mayor and council, so all the variances will go to the License and Variance Board. It'll be the same schedule of second and fourth Wednesday, 10:00 AM. It'll be the same three-person board. So basically, it just goes back to before it was changed to go to mayor and council. Everything else stays the same.
I think when we made the decision to move it to mayor and council, we were doing it because we had some contentious variances, and we thought this might be a better forum to hear them all. And what it did was made it more difficult for residents, and this will be a lot easier process. But we did put in there, if it's contested in any way, shape, or form, that it can be appealed to this body to decide to correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions of Joey? Any comments? This is a public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak for or against this agenda item, please come forward and be sworn in. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll turn this over to Mr. Glenn Pickens to handle. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to speak on this issue? Okay, come on. We'll open it back up.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for listening to me. I want to also address another issue later, but I do want to speak to this.
Can you speak your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Jenny Barti, and I live at 4094 Laurel Springs Way in Smyrna, 30082. Okay. Moving the code amendments of city code from the mayor and city council to the License and Variance Board as soon as July 14th next week seems like an odd change to me. Going through all the zoning variance requests and details in the meetings is very laborious and may seem unimportant to outsiders, but residents often do have very valid concerns, and they need to have the opportunity to ask questions in the city council meeting. It seems there would need to be assurance that issues would be properly addressed by the board. Residents must know who is on this board and how can public information relating to it be obtained. I am particularly struck by the alcoholic beverage ordinance, stream buffer, and urban design district being subject to this change. It stands out that while having a brewery built is being planned, any oversight by the council and the public is being removed. I have real concerns as well about the stream buffer and urban design district being removed from public input. These are two areas very near and dear to me, particularly dealing with the environment and our need for clean water and community issues involved in urban design and sustainability. I think we need more information about what has led the mayor and the majority of the council to make these moves and what you are hoping to accomplish by them. And since public comment follows the voting and all the substance of the meetings, I don't know if and when there will be a response. It seems to me that the public input is what is supposed to guide actions taken by the council, and there should be more opportunities for questions posed by the public to be answered at the same meeting and prior to voting, which apparently, in this case, it is gonna happen that way. So thank you very much for listening. I'll be back.
Anybody else who'd like to speak for or against this issue, please come forward. All right, with that, though, we'll close the public hearing. I will just say, we're not removing any oversight. This is literally, the License and Variance Board heard variances for years, and this council decided that we would move them to the council meetings. So we've removed variances from the License and Variance Board, made it just the license board, and heard the variances here, which was a mistake, because it made the council meetings longer, we had, it was more difficult for residents, and now we've put it back to the way it was before, and we've put in place that if there's any contented contentious items, anybody has any opposition, it gets kicked to council. So that's all we're doing, is putting it back to the way it was before. Don't read into it. There's nothing more to it. With that, I'll turn it over to Glenn Pickens to handle this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2021-13.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. I should note that Councilman Wagner, Councilman Gould are out of town on family business. Let's approve five-zero. Thank you. Item five is proof of licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. We don't have any formal business this evening. Happens on holiday weekends sometimes. Seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A, approval of the June 7th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of the June 21st, 2021 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, approval of the June 21st, 2021 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item D, approval to use council chambers for wards three and six for the joint neighborhood meeting on July 18th, 2021, from 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM in AMAX Bacon City Hall Council Chambers. Item E, award RFP 21-015, full-service janitorial contract. All requests for proposals were reviewed and scored by city staff. The review team selected the highest-ranking firm and recommended American Facility Services of 1325 Union Hill Industrial Court, Suite A, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30004, in the amount of $169,200. And item F, approval of the contract with Cliff's Fire Extinguisher, located at 311 Bell Park Drive, Woodstock, Georgia, 30188, in the amount of $20,075, for one year with option to renew if performance and pricing is acceptable, for the annual inspection and maintenance of all city alarms, sprinklers, extinguishers, and kitchen systems, using Cobb County Annual Contract Number 18-6384, and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I understand there's a couple of suggested edits to the minutes. Ms. Wilkinson, did you want to address those?
Sure. The one, I don't have, I didn't, no, you were gonna call on me to do that, but I'm happy to. At the Committee of the Whole Meeting on June 17th, 2021, I had asked about the plaza area and the area that was in the plans for the downtown redevelopment design, if that was going to be a permanent stage, or was it gonna be the portable stage that the city had purchased a couple of years ago? And I was told that it would be the portable stage, and so that is on page four. And the way the minutes read, I guess, is it doesn't read in that way, but it's gonna be-
It just needs to reflect that that's a plaza area that's a stage could be put on, either temporary stage, either the one that we have purchased by the city or somebody else putting one up, but that's where that would go.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then on page five, I just, where it quoted, "A plan was presented on June 2nd," and I just said, "That was June 3rd."
June 3rd. All right.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you make those changes? And can I have a motion to approve? I do have a motion. Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please vote. Let's approve five-zero. Thank you. Number nine is ward and committee reports. We'll start tonight with Dr. Louis Wheaton.
Having trouble getting it on there, sorry. A lot to say, no report this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Wilkinson.
I have a little bit to say. I just want to say with this process, with the PON study that was contracted in 2019 to do the study of the downtown, that there wasn't, that was toward the end of 2019, and at that time, it did not have the downtown master plan that we saw, the community saw recently, you know, June 8th, at the first public input meeting, that it was just contracted for them to do the study, and with that, I believe they had one community meeting at Broner. What I read in the plan, that 30 people attended that meeting, and then the other, I think there was a meeting with the youth council, which had nine people there, and then also the interviews with stakeholders, which I was one of those stakeholders. At that time, it didn't have the plan there. So sometimes I think it's kind of confusing, and confusing for me and confusing for the citizens, to think that that plan was in the works for two years ago, when it was really just a study where they were gathering information and data from the community. And then I do believe there was some online surveys that shows in the study report that there were a little over 500 people that responded to the survey online. I have not seen the details of those surveys, the questions and the responses. I would like to see them. But anyway, so that also was part of that, I guess, questionnaire, as far as moving forward. When the council received the plan that was presented to the community, that was on June 3rd, and that evening was when we were informed that we were going to a public meeting on June 8th with that plan. And I do know in prior, in that meeting, in a prior meeting when it came up, there were some concerns expressed about some of the things that were in the plan. There were some good things and some things that we may have had some concerns about, and I think by some members of this council that expressed concerns about the traffic flow and changing what that would do to the area and the neighborhoods west of there, and then also, it was also expressed about the, an addition that maybe the traffic, I think, traffic study was mentioned, but anyway, we were told on June, I mean, August 13th, 2020, that it was a high-level plan, and it was meant to start the conversations. That was what was communicated to us at that council, it was a Committee of the Whole Meeting that was at the community center, and it was during the pandemic when we all had our masks on and everything. So I guess beyond that, I think that the first time I had seen the plan that was done was on June 3rd. Anyway, I just kind of wanted to clarify some of that. I did just put in my basket when I came down here, just for an example, because when we did the South Cobb Drive corridor design study, there were at least four public meetings, I believe, and there were probably 100 people that attended each one of those public meetings, and there was a lot of public responses and input. This manual right here shows, this is just the responses from people that attended the meetings, and that was given to the mayor and council. And that kind of data, I have not really received that this time, and that makes me uncomfortable about the way things have moved so fast and not seeing that kind of, or the responses, or the online survey data results. And anyway, I just thought that was just a comparison about how that process went. And then at the end, and that was done with Croy Engineering, and at the end, they presented four different concepts to the public, and then the public got to comment on those four different concepts. And then from that, three of those were actually rolled into the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2017, and that study was started in 2016. And so I just thought that was as a comparison and thought I would share that experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. And as Ms. Wilkinson said, that plan was generated from that input from the community. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, today is, I believe, the 6th of July, and the 4th of July is over. The city of Smyrna, I believe in the last city council meeting, enacted a fireworks ordinance where anybody shooting off fireworks at any time now needs to go get a permit. So the 4th of July is over. Let's stop shooting fireworks at this point, please. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Good thoughts. Mr. Lindley.
I'm gonna, amen, Councilman Welch. No report this evening, sir.
Mr. Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. No report as well.
Mr. Bennett.
No, sir, no report.
Jeffrey. Ms. Penny.
No report, Your Honor.
Ms. Heather.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 10 is show cause hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. We have several signed up for citizen input this evening. I'd like to call Mr. Mike Mitchell, 1181 Church Street. Wants to talk about downtown.
I've been a regular.
This is my clock, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. I need someone to give me a 1 minute 30 seconds so I can change topics here. So I want to talk about downtown. I want to talk about this rhetoric. I want to talk about all of this stuff we've heard, all of the misinformation, correct information, relatively accurate, not accurate. I've talked to a lot of my co-citizens who are really concerned about the fact that there were only two public information meetings, and they didn't know anything about them. How did I know something about them? Because I communicate the way the world communicates nowadays. Social media, Instagram, Facebook, websites, et cetera. I also want to talk a little bit about other meetings that were held, that were held for the sake of constituents, where we brought in subject matter experts that we didn't vet. My advice, when you bring in a subject matter expert, make sure they actually work in the subject matter you're talking about. Panic and change is normal when you're doing any construction. I'm painting my house right now, and I'm completely stressed out about it, and it has nothing to do with anybody in this room. It has to do with Mike Mitchell, and I'm completely stressed out. Did I pick the right color? Is the tone right? Is the lighting gonna work? Change is uncomfortable. Change is scary. But let's talk about what change does do. A lot of people are concerned about adding green space. A lot of people are concerned about traffic flow when we change the road. Let's think about the age of this community. Most people in this community have small children. Most of those people enjoy getting out and hanging out with their kids. We're giving them more opportunity to do that. We're giving them more opportunity to network as a community. That is not a bad thing. It's also important to remember, this is passed. The downtown improvement's passed. I was at the meeting. It passed. It's a done deal. Now we just have to figure out what it looks like. I am disheartened when I hear citizens say this is going to change the element of Smyrna. I had a citizen tell me before I went downtown, it's gonna bring trash to Smyrna. Please help me define trash. Please. Because if I'm trash because I have an alcoholic beverage, then I will hang out in the Cobb County Dome. Please help me define trash. What this does is this brings opportunity to Smyrna. It makes Smyrna more desirable and more beautiful, and I know you know this, I know you know this, I know you know this. My goal in life is for Smyrna to be considered a place to be, and a place to live, and a place to play, and a place to love. What we're doing is good. What we're doing is positive. I understand change is scary. Change is scary for all of us, especially for those of us who have lived here a long time. Change is important. Change is necessary. What we have right now is almost in ruins. We would have the same disruption if we fixed the fountain. You guys did a great job, and I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next, I'm gonna call on former Smyrna council member and current state representative Terry Nellwitz. Welcome back.
I'm triggered. This is a lot of sensory memories in this room. And one of the members, Terry Nellwitz, 1121 Parkview Place, so right down the street from here, down Powder Springs Street. I walk and drive through the downtown multiple times a day, every day, and have for the past 16 years since my family and I moved here. We moved here because Smyrna had been redeveloped into a place that was a community not just for residents who have lived here for generations, but for the new families who wanted to come here and be a part of this vibrant community. I moved here, we bought our house because I could put my baby in a stroller. At that point, there was only one, then there were two, and walk them to the duck pond, walk to one of the most amazing libraries in the state of Georgia, walk to multiple parks and playgrounds. And even before I was on the council, I felt like there were some missed opportunities with the downtown area, and particularly, and I imagine you could probably go into the minutes, because this is one of the only things that Max Bacon and I ever really disagreed on, and that was that roundabout area. I always thought it would be the best place for a splash pad. When we had the parks, and I think this was referenced earlier, when we had some parks experts come in and help with the planning, and they came to us and said, "We do not understand why you have all of these roads in your downtown." I was like, "Amen and hallelujah. We don't need all those roads." And again, I'm saying this as a resident who lives in an area that will be directly impacted by any changes in the traffic flow. I do not think that what we currently have right now in that downtown area, in front of the library and in front of the community center, is the highest and best use of that land. And when I found out that finally, after all these years of like being on my wish list, that fountain area was going to be transformed into a splash pad, I was like, "This is perfect." I mean, it's a gathering place. Any concerns about traffic on Powder Springs Street, I think are mitigated, one, by that traffic light, which again, that's another hallelujah, and two, by the fact that I know, living in this downtown area, the roundabout is closed all the time, at least once or twice a month, for concerts, for farmers' markets, for different festivals. You know, pre-19, it was closed off pretty regularly. There was never an increase in traffic, ever. It just didn't happen. And so I'm not concerned about any increase in traffic. I am delighted that we are going to see bricks and concrete become green space. I am thrilled by the brewery. I think that if your idea of a brewery is what you saw in Laverne and Shirley, you need to visit one of the many breweries that have popped up around metro Atlanta in recent years, because they are magnets for families, they are magnets for young people, and they are magnets for the dynamic redevelopment we need to see continue happening throughout Smyrna in order to remain relevant and cutting-edge in metro Atlanta. Thank you.
Ms. Nellwitz, if I could, I'm gonna contradict a little bit of what you said. That was not the only thing that you and Max ever disagreed on.
Good point. Point well taken. Thank you, Representative Nellwitz, and thank you for your service to our community. Next, we have Ms. Pat Burns, 10 Concord Road Southwest, Smyrna.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burns. I live at 10 Concord Road, Smyrna. The design plans that it appears most of you have agreed to are not the best Croy Engineering can do. Although Smyrna's municipal buildings were once state-of-the-art, they are now weary and often duplicated. The downtown needs a refresh. But I am not understanding why the design submitted by Croy Engineering was chosen, except Croy has been a next-door neighbor and no-one-workable partner. Old Jim Croy and I go back 30 years. We probably share the same gerontologist. I know Jim Croy can do better. As Cobb County's head of Department of Transportation, Mr. Croy intended to put the East-West Connector on top of what we know as the Silver Comet Trail. Community objected, because it would become perilously close to the historic buildings near the Covered Bridge and an area of wetlands, and it would exclude any trail possibilities. After much negotiation between CDOT and the community, Mr. Croy moved the East-West Connector design to its present location, and we all enjoy the Silver Comet Trail, plus Heritage Park, as well as the Covered Bridge Historic District. In addition, the brewery's size and dimensions, as it appears on the design plan, looms over Smyrna's community center and library. This oversized structure would be more acceptable in Louis Wheaton's ward beside the Chattahoochee, but not on the remaining slip of land in Smyrna. In conclusion, let's take a close look at possibilities, because parts of the design are indeed lovely and innovative, but don't limit us to become a brewery clone town or by taking the easy design way out, like building on top of the Silver Comet Trail. Thank you.
Jenny Barti, 4094 Laurel Springs Way.
Thank you again. Hello, everybody. Okay, my other topic that I'm very concerned about is the downtown development plan. I do not think it's needed myself, and I know that many others feel the same. Others may feel Smyrna needs to make changes, but the glaring issue I see with the plan is the lack of public input in it. Mr. Mayor, you stated that we voted for you to make the decisions. I don't think that's quite right. You are to make decisions that are in the public interest, and after getting adequate public engagement, and after that's achieved. You were voted for after winning a- You were voted for after winning a very close runoff, and you're in a position that requires you to be responsive to all residents, not just the ones who got you elected. Continue, sorry. Okay. The process leading up to the vote of the plan was rushed with few opportunities for public engagement. And I believe that the new city council members may have bought into your statements that this redevelopment thing had been in the works for years. High-level discussions may have taken place, but there was no actual plan put forth to council members until less than two weeks before the vote was taken. And as you've heard from others, among them, Mr. McNabb from the last city council meeting, who's a council member from the 90s, and he served at the time that the large-scale redevelopment that brought our beautiful downtown to life was done. He said that there were weeks and months at several stages of the plan soliciting input from the citizens of Smyrna. The citizens of Smyrna were not adequately informed of this, this time, and I believe that is without question. Aside from the problem with the process, I strongly believe that the plan is a bad idea. Putting a brewery next to the community center and a church, not to mention a polling place, is totally inappropriate. The optics of it are horrible, and I'm not sure it's legal. Smyrna does not need another drinking establishment. We have a growler that is usually packed with people, as well as a lovely wine shop that has done well over many years, possibly decades. In addition, the three major restaurants at the start of our downtown all serve alcohol. And that seems to be plenty for me, I would think, in the small area that our downtown occupies. It really is a stretch for me to believe that a brewery is truly family-friendly, and drinking around kids is not something I think represents thoughtful parenting. And believe me, I'm not a prude. Destroying this beautiful spot in downtown would be a travesty, particularly to be replaced by a beer place and a parking deck. I've been told the word is that it would take at least $2 million to repair the fountain in front of the community center. That seems hard to believe. Were any bids ever requested? And since there are no competing bids on the plan to sell our land that was made, I doubt that there are.
Ms. Barti, your time has expired. Can you please wrap it up?
Yes. I've also heard that the pavers are all messed up. I've been there, they're not. Anybody can see that, just walk down there. So we have hand-laid, beautiful brickwork and a beautiful fountain that wouldn't cost $2 million to repair. I want it to stay there. It's cherished. The roundabout is so progressive, it's so beautiful.
Thank you, Ms. Barti.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next we have Mr. Mike Smith, 203 Angla Drive, subject downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I just wanted to talk a minute. My wife and I moved to Smyrna six years ago because we've heard that it was a great place to raise a family. We have two young kids, a four-year-old and a two-year-old, and we are very excited for the change that is proposed and passed that's coming to downtown. We look forward to the day that we can wake up from a nap on a Saturday afternoon, we can come downtown, we can play in the splash pad, play in a green space that is not currently there, and then go out for dinner right here in our backyard, right down the street from where we live, instead of having to go to the Battery, or having to go to Marietta Square, or somewhere. We want to stay home in Smyrna. And so we're very excited about that. And I think, we both think, that this is exactly what the full family experience that downtown Smyrna is missing currently from what we have today at the Smyrna Market Village with the fountain and the roundabout. We and our very close friends are all in favor of this change, and want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council members for continuing to make Smyrna a place that families want to be and parents want to raise their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next we have Alex Backery, 3459 Shawnee Trail. Comments?
I'd first like to comment that I'm proud of Ward Four and Ward Five in that last vote on the splash, that they had the foresight to try and table it, so we had more time to discuss it. There are 19 brackets of how the money's being spent, and people have no clue of anywhere near that amount. Now, this council was notified on June 3rd that they were gonna make an announcement on the June 8th, that they were gonna vote on it the 21st. What's the rush? The money's not gonna be allocated till January 1st of '22 and sent out March 1st of '22. The city should have put a flyer in the mail with the listing, the 19, for people at home to see. And you can't answer questions if you don't know anything about the topic. So when they see that, they can look at it. The city should have then, in the next month, put out a flyer announcing a city-town hall meeting. Now the people can come and give good feedback and answer questions, yea and eh. That was denied. And I find this to be a scandal when it comes to open government. This is a $57 million project, and the only way people know it, if they were on Facebook. I don't have Facebook, and many other people don't. I've talked to quite a few people. No one knows anything about this project. And I just feel the five council people that voted in favor of rushing this should really question whether they should run again. I really question whether they have the interest of the people in mind to ask for their feedback. And I just don't understand why we haven't had better communications on this. And when I asked a question at the last meeting on something outside downtown, I was told by the mayor, "We're here only to discuss downtown." Well, taxpayers have the right to ask questions on any subject and their money. And that's very important, that you're accountable for any question in the total of 19 projects. So downtown is just one part of it, but I have questions on other parts and have yet to get answers to it. And I just really think the city should change their name to the City of Socialism. It's a sad scenario, the way this was all done, the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Backery. Next I have Mr. Joseph Blankenship, 1403 Wedmore Way.
Good evening, and thank you for letting us be heard on this. So my wife and I live here in Smyrna. And I'll be honest with you, when she said, "Hey, we're getting married, why don't we move to Smyrna?" I was kinda like, "Eh, I don't know, Smyrna. I don't know if I want to live there." I lived in Sandy Springs, lots to do, that kind of stuff. Also, a lot of traffic, lots of really high-dollar real estate. So we came over here to Smyrna, got to investigate the Village Green, got to know people, and really fell in love with the place. Bought our home here. We decided to make Smyrna our permanent home, and really loved coming down here to the Village Green, the Market Village, enjoying ourselves, that type of thing. So we also travel quite a bit, all over Georgia and all over the United States. One of the things we do enjoy doing is going to breweries, going and visiting small business, supporting small business. Right now, if we want to go and enjoy a craft beer, we have to go to Marietta, we have to go to the Marietta Square, where they've got restaurants, breweries, whatever. We can go up to Red Hair, we go all over the place. We can't come to Smyrna. So when I saw this proposed development, I was pretty excited. Came down, got to see it, got to talk to the people putting it together, was very excited at that, very excited at kind of the change to bring more people downtown and make our community even better, and draw more people to our community, improve our property values, improve our tax base. So I can tell you that my wife, who is a commercial real estate agent, and I are both very much in favor of this community redevelopment project, the brewery, and all the, everything it's gonna bring to everyone, families and people like us included. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Dave Lincoln, 2860 Parkwood Road.
How you doing? My name's Dave Lincoln, 2860 Parkwood Road. How you all doing tonight? It's almost over, so we're almost out of here. A little closer to the mic? Is that good? Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Well, what Susan was saying about the center part there where you're gonna have more green space, that's true, but I think the rotary and that center hub was what really anchors the city, the center of the city. Now, turning that maybe into a green space, not such a bad idea, if you can accommodate the traffic flow changes that may occur because of that. But really, when I look at this from Croy, it looks like a slash through a circle. I mean, it's really kinda grotesquely messed up that circle. It's barely a circle when you do that. And now, if you put terracing in there, or maybe not terracing is not the right word, but contouring that in such a way to make it like an amphitheater, like you've done over there at Bronner, now you have a situation where you don't have a flat surface to stand on, and it's hard for people to congregate. And so restricting it with the road, and then having the shaped contours of the land, I'm afraid our festivals are gonna be a thing of the past. You're gonna end up with like block parties, where you close roads, you're gonna put a brewery in our front lawn here. So we'll be stuck between a manufacturing facility, which a brewery is, it's manufacturing, beer brewing, big tanks out there. You're gonna see our front face will be now a brewery. And I don't know if their backside is gonna be to Atlanta Road, or their backside's gonna be to the community center or what, but they're gonna have deliveries. It's a manufacturing facility making heat, it's got deliveries, and it's just, to me, it doesn't seem like the right place. It doesn't seem like a good fit right there. When you have your front lawn, we could do something like you see on Abernathy Road, Sandy Springs. They did a lovely park along there where people can play behind a fence that you can see through, you can still admire the railroad there, which Smyrna has a real history with that. Used to have the trolley along Atlanta Road. So there's a history to that, it's just nodded to, and the playground there, which is just great. But I don't understand why we have to sell our green space to a brewery and then minimize the circle. It's great to put green spaces, splash pads fine, but then cutting through there with the road and the contouring, like Bronner, I think that's a nightmare to men. I don't know how you cut the grass or maintain that surface. It's high and dry in some places, and low in others, it has a drainage issue. So I don't see people using that so much. And if we have an amphitheater, why do we want to do a similar thing here? Same with the splash pad. Why not have that at Bronner? Keep that sort of thing, and leave this more of an open space. Because people want to go up there during an event like the Smyrna birthday, spread their blankets out, have a certain community event. We don't want a block party where you close streets, it's all hardscape, it's a brewery, and nobody can spread out a blanket and have that whole community that we all love so much. We really want to get together as neighbors, and we're fearful this is gonna go away, because it'll minimize our space. There won't be enough space for all the people to go up there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Natasha Dyer, 120 Torum Lane Brewery. Natasha Dyer here. Okay, Mr. Daniel Parker.
Daniel Parker, 4121 Daniel Green Trail here in Smyrna. I'm not a stat and data person. I'm just up here to give support to the project. My wife and I moved to Smyrna in '98. At the time, it wasn't the most desired place to live. We heard that from plenty of people outside of Smyrna, and we've seen so much growth since we purchased a home here in 2000. We've raised two kids, just had my firstborn graduate from Campbell High School. My daughter is going into 11th grade at Campbell in the IB program. I cannot say enough great things about our community, and I emphasize the word "community." So many people come in to visit, from out of town or from other cities here in Georgia, and they cannot say enough great things about our community. I've had people come in when we first moved here, and still come to visit today, and see the changes that we've had here, and people absolutely love it. Now, can't please everybody, that's just the fact of life. Not everybody's gonna be happy with what's going on. We're static about it. I hear a lot of negative stuff about breweries, negative stuff about going out and having a drink with your kids, being there. I can say that my wife and I are two of the best parents in this world. I promise you that, you can ask anybody who knows us. And we have no problem going out in the afternoon after church and having a cocktail or a drink with our kids sitting next to us and having lunch. The brewery's not a saloon where it's a big nightclub, where it's gonna be partying and stuff like that's going on. Breweries are a good thing. People can go and relax and have a beer, have some lunch, have something to eat. You know, again, you can't please everybody, and there's gonna be a lot of negative, but I'll tell you what, there's just as much, if not more, positive out there also. I'm proud to be a citizen of Smyrna, and I commend all of you for the job that you guys do, because I know it's not easy, because you have to sit through meetings like this and hear both sides, whether you voted for it or not. I hate the negative part of it, because I think when I first came up, I said "community", and that's one of the things we love about this town, is the community. We just drove through here to Park, and there's people all over out here, and we just concentrated on their facial expressions. Everybody's happy. Everybody's out there, they're congregating with people, it's beautiful weather, and I think the change is gonna bring a lot more of that to our community. And I know people are afraid of change, but like the gentleman said earlier, I mean, that's, you know, it's part of life. And it might not be the most positive thing, but we're excited about it, and I'm just, I'm here to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Next up is Mazraat Nolton, 1367 Poplar Point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for hearing what we have to say about these issues about I am part of a group of demographics that I thought that when I moved to Smyrna, it was in a good majority, and that's single women. And with the years, things have changed. As I said, I moved in '93, and as the city progressed, more families moved in, so there is more youth in the population. And with youth, you have to provide services to accommodate this other demographic. As far as I know, all these changes, or the way I look at it, are predicated upon this brewery. And to my knowledge, kids cannot go to a brewery by themselves to be entertained by themselves. I think that if you're going to use the space for something that will be for the benefit of the population of the city of Smyrna, you have to take into consideration the children, the teenagers, that do not have a place to go and be entertained by themselves. This past weekend, I heard somebody talking about this place in the city of Chattanooga, right next to the aquarium, where there are rock climbing walls of different levels, and this is something that children love to do. They love to see how their agility is. In any event, I think that the space is not properly used. I hear people here talking that I think that the brewery would be a good thing, and they're talking about having a meal and da-da-da. But as the plans have not been properly expressed to the citizenship of Smyrna, many people, like these people here, don't know that there will not be a restaurant there, that there is no food being served there. If you want food, you may have to go outside the building. So that is something also very important. But the location of it, right next to a church, I don't think is the most desirable either, but, and next to the community center, you know, community center is full of children, and we don't want them to be exposed to people being drunk. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Council, for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Next is Natalie Pitchford, 3943 North Cooper Lake Road.
My name is Natalie Pitchford. I am a mom to a seven-year-old and a two-year-old. I'm a teacher, an arts administrator, a professional singer, actor, theatrical director, and I'm married to a professional jazz trombone player and educator. We- We live at a well-known historic property, and we have lived there since 2018, here in Smyrna. And we have enjoyed commuting every day, night, to other metro areas, for restaurants, and performances, and even our own gigs, since we moved here about five years ago. We have also traveled for shows, for outdoor play space for our kids, and yes, even breweries. In fact, and I assure you, we are also thoughtful parents, we took our kids to a brewery tonight for dinner, and they had a great time, and they're now very tired, and they're in bed, even though they did not themselves have a beer, I promise you. I'm here to speak in unapologetic and undulterated support of the downtown vision. I cannot wait to bring my kids to play in our own downtown splash pad, grab a beer, and enjoy the food trucks. I am, full disclosure, a member of the Arts and Culture Task Force here in the city of Smyrna, and we are currently working hard to make our city a thriving and robust arts destination, in addition to the splash pad for my kids, the brewery for my husband, and guess what, is necessary for future events? Parking. The parking deck. While this vision may seem like the destination, it's actually a starting point for so many other incredible possibilities. This is a beginning. This is a first step toward engaging our immediate and metro community. It is a first step toward having a vibrant art scene here in the city of Smyrna, and making this an actual destination, so that I don't have to leave the town, and pay the babysitter an extra hour, when I want to go do something. Take a moment, imagine driving to downtown Smyrna, just five minutes from my home, rather than Roswell or Buckhead, to enjoy a nice evening out of culture and fun. Change is hard. As a creative myself, I know that making something new is a complex process. It is certainly filled with naysayers along the way. I, myself, am a yaysayer. In the words of Abraham Maslow, "In any given moment, we have two options, to step forward into growth, or to step back into safety. Be the person that supports growth, be the person that trusts, that helps answer the questions, the person that supports." The yaysayers are the ones that help the dreamers, the young families, the kids, get things done. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for voting toward the first step of this process.
Thank you, Ms. Pitchford. We have two more signed up. Mr. Scott Taylor. Can I bite you up now? You're going to have to put that microphone up, I can already tell.
I'll be all right. Appreciate everyone's time here, I'll make it brief here. Sorry for my appearance, we just came back from baseball practice, my son's obviously back there as well. I don't have a formal speech planned, but like the woman prior to myself, I am an advocate for the downtown proposal. I'm an advocate for everything that's mentioned in it, the enhanced green space, the splash pad, the restrooms, which are going to be a huge improvement, and of course, the brewery itself. Like the woman before myself, my children have grown up going to breweries, and that's not something I'm embarrassed to admit, because they go and they have a good time. What I'm looking forward to most about this, is the ability to not have to drive to another city, to go visit a brewery, go hang out, go have meals, go do whatever the case may be. I've been a resident in Smyrna since 2010. My grandparents moved here back in the early 50s. My mother was born here, raised here, et cetera. Vacationed here every summer, my dad was military, so we moved around everywhere else. But, you know, Smyrna used to be a sleepy little town, and I've seen the transformation that it's undergone over the many years. And this is something that I think will propel Smyrna to the next level, to propel it to something where people want to go to, not just live in, and will allow residents to not have to go to other places, to spend their dollars, to have a good time, to relax with their families, relax with their friends, et cetera. So, I know it's very easy for people to speak out against the proposal, and you tend to find more people speaking out than you do speaking for it. But I, for one, am definitely in proposal of this, or support of this, as are many, many, many people that I'm connected with, who think it's one of the best things that the city's proposed in a very long time. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Last on the list is Mr. Anthony Alvarez. Can I bite you up to speak now? Thank you for doing business in Smyrna. Nice to see you this evening.
Well, thank you all for having me. First of all, thank you all for having this meeting, I think it's very important that all views are expressed. And, just wanted to say that, I'm going to make this brief, because I didn't have anything prepared, but I've been living in the Smyrna community for about sixteen, seventeen years, and I am in full favor of what is being planned for the community, and the growth, and the progress of the downtown area. You know, I think COVID taught us a lot, and one thing that it did teach me, because I do have two businesses there in the downtown area, is that that space that we have currently was just underutilized. It was underutilized in many different ways. And when COVID came about, we saw what that space could do. So, these new revitalizations, whether, you know, whether it's the brewery, or the green space, or any improvements, I'm just 100% behind. So, that's really all I have to say, and I look forward to helping in any way I can, to make, you know, everything move forward. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. For anybody watching out there, if you haven't been to the wine market, or the bourbon and cigar bar, I'd encourage you to try it, it's pretty good, both of them. Thanks again for doing business in Smyrna. That is the last person signed up to speak. Is there anybody else out there who wishes to say anything this evening? Yes, ma'am.
How you doing, everybody?
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jennifer Vanderloop. I live at 3575 South Sherwood Road. My husband and his family have been here for who knows how long, since my husband was four. And, the idea of this brewery coming in to Smyrna, I am all for. I totally agree that the green space that is next to the community center is underutilized. However, the changes that are being proposed, getting rid of the roundabout, and changing the traffic patterns there, has caused some concerns for me. And all of the residents that live in and around the town square, how that roundabout works magnificently for controlling the traffic patterns. And the proposal of getting rid of the roundabout, in order to replace the green space, has caused some concern for me. The brewery, as long as it doesn't cause any inconvenience to the residents that live in and around the town square, I'm all for. There are, in fact, there are underutilized industrial spaces here in Smyrna, that if need be, could be used as an alternative location for this brewery. I'm all for bringing that business in. But I think we might need to take some more time to consider the traffic patterns, and the impact that getting rid of the roundabout is going to have on how accessible the community center is, how accessible the library is, and these residences that are near the town square are, before we decide to just get rid of the roundabout. I'm all for more green space, heaven knows, but it is a concern for me, and for several people that I've talked to, that are local. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Just remind everybody that the roundabout area, and parking deck, we've already voted on that, and that is moving forward. Appreciate how passionate our community is, that's what I love most about this community. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, good evening. Sorry, my name is Shawn Martin.
I saw you on the news tonight.
Yeah, you did, you did. One thing I want to say is, there's a lot of people in this room. One thing I can say about all of us...
Can you state, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, absolutely. Shawn Martin, 2884 Anderson Circle, just across the railroad track.
Miss Corrigan, stop, start the clock as well, please, thank you.
So, with that said, I believe everybody in this room, all the people out in the audience, can say that we do agree on a number of things. We love Smyrna, we think that the change is necessary, and we want to see Smyrna really grab a hold of a slice of entertainment life that other cities have. The one thing that I am most concerned about, is our identity. Identities that come to cities, with the kind of history that Smyrna has, it makes sense that those components, those anchors, that make us who we are, and for so long, that they actually stay, that we give them the license and the freedom to remain, so that they can be a part of our future. Getting rid of the fountain, I know that that was already discussed, voted on, but I really want to encourage you all, the city council, as well as our general community, to really step back and think about what it is that we want for Smyrna. Smyrna shouldn't be like any other city. A brewery that, you know, should we look like a brewery out in Roswell? This isn't Roswell. So, I would encourage that you guys take a different look at what we have, what we are, as a city, and think about those things that make Smyrna special. Regarding the sale of the property, I really encourage you all to not sell the property, because that land over there is prime. That is really our, when I say "our", I mean the city of Smyrna's connection to a major thoroughfare. And any festival that we have on that open green over there, it draws people into the space. If what you're trying to do is to incubate the space, bring energy to it, that is the perfect connection to the Belmont Plaza development. So, I don't think anybody here really wants to see us be stifled, or for lack of creativity, you know, that we're not moving forward for the sake of just saying no. I think we all care, we all want the same thing. The truth is, is how do we move forward from here? What can we do to make that, make the final solution, one that is well-rounded, and representative of people who don't necessarily go to breweries? And so, with that being said, I just want to say, it takes both the naysayers and the yaysayers, to really have a great dialogue and an awesome solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anybody else? All right, that's all the citizen input. I want to say something I forgot to say earlier, I want to remind everybody that on July 28th, that's a Wednesday, at 6:00 PM, at the community center in the large gym, I'm going to be doing my State of the City address, be the first one that I've done since I've been in office. It'll answer a lot of questions about city vision, and different projects, and all kinds of things that we have coming up. And I look forward to having as many of you attend as possible. We've never done it in the evening before, we did it that way, so that more people could participate. It's going to be streamed online, a recording will be available on the city website and Facebook. I want everybody to be as plugged in as possible, so, July 28th at 6:00 PM. With that, if there's no business, other business be brought before this body, adjourn us at 8:03.